Good evening. We get ready to start the Agenda Review Session. I remind you to please turn off your cell phones. Prior to starting, I just want to ask how many of you are here for the public hearing that we can play on. We went to the fire museum. The fire museum. Anybody here yet? Agenda Review. Ordinance 011301. This is an ordinance of second reading. It's an ordinance to authorize vacation of a portion of Liberty Street and a portion of Nielsen Street in the City of New Brunswick. Ordinance of first reading. Ordinance 01102. This is an ordinance to approve a financial agreement with 135 Somerset News Urban Innoal LLC. Resolutions. Resolution 011335. Approve Agenda Reviews. Resolution 336. Approve Payer Room from December 22, 2012 to 1/4, 2013. Resolution 337. Authorize refund for new tax bill certificates. Now we're going to go into some resolutions related to reorganization matters. Resolution 338. Advice and consent to permanent board appointment and reappointments of Nikada Murphy, Carmen Lopez, and Catherine Pister. Resolution 339. Authorize professional service agreement with Mr. William Hamilton, your senior attorney for 2013 not to exceed $50,000 per an open. Resolution 340. Authorize professional service agreement with Charlie Gagen, Assistant Senior Attorney for 2013 not to exceed $30,000 per an open. Resolution 341. Authorize professional service agreement with Bob Sacher, Hattfield LLC for 2013 label cancel, label cancel not to exceed $25,000 per an open. Resolution 342. Authorize professional service agreement with Conca, Longo, Morant, Dunn, and Duquesne. Special counsel for tax appeal in 2013 not to exceed $40,000 per an open. Resolution 343. Authorize professional service agreement with Francesco, Peyton, Pauling, Jasper, Kuntzman, Davis, and Herd for counsel for tax appeals in 2013 not to exceed $5,000 from January 1, 2013 to December 31, 2013 per an open. Resolution 344. Authorize professional service agreement with York Evaluation and Consulting Services for real estate property appraisal services for tax appeal in 2013 not to exceed $40,000 per an open. Resolution 345. Authorize professional service agreement with Realty Appraisal Company for property inspection services for agribasessment, tax assessor in 2013 not to exceed $10,000 per an open. Resolution 346. Authorize professional service agreement with special data logic for tax map maintenance and GIS maintenance services in 2013 not to exceed $40,000 per an open. Resolution 347. Authorize professional service agreement with special data logic in communicable software, GIS program, and technical support for the division of tax assessor in 2013 not to exceed $22,000 per an open. Resolution 344, 348, I'm sorry. Authorize professional service agreement with Sullivan Cucci-Pulli.
Cucci-Pulli.
Cucci-Pulli LLC doing business as Front Medical Care for 2013 physician services not to exceed $27,500 per an open. Resolution 349. Authorize professional service agreement with Bridgeport and Better Medical Hospital for veterinary services for police scanners, Jamison, and Ollie for 2013 from January 1, 2013 to December 31, 2013 not to exceed $5,000. Resolution 350. Authorize professional service agreement with Hatchmont, McDonald, and Holden's doing business as Hatchmont, McDonald, LLC for 2013 engineering finance support services for water utility not to exceed $90,000 per an open. Resolution 351. Allow professional service agreement with Hatchmont, McDonald for engineering site inspections to approve site plans from January 1, 2013 to December 31, 2013. This is funded by escrow for an open. Resolution 352. Authorize professional service agreement with Williams, Long, and Spitzer for 2013 bond council amount $20,000 for an open. Resolution 353. Authorize professional service agreement with Sample Climate Company for municipal auditor in 2013 not to exceed $87,125 per an open. Resolution 354. Authorize professional service agreement with viral communications for tax assessment computer program and technical support for 2013 not to exceed $19,500 per an open. Resolution 355. Authorize establishment of petty cash account for various departments. And this is the end of reorganization matters.
Those two blanks were not needed, but when we started out, we didn't know them.
Resolution 358. Approve amendment of resolution R-11205. The reason is to pay additional fees in the amount of $306 to Benedict and Alman for Anderson versus Anthony Caputo from $1,623.50 to $1,929.50. Resolution 359. Approve amendment of resolution R-11206. The reason is to pay additional fees in the amount of $348.50 to Benedict and Alman for Patrick Pister from $17,059.50 to $17,498. Resolution 360. Approve request for city property. And this is requested by Rockers Hill, Location Village Park and Pavilion for bike and run, walk, and one-mile run walk on Sunday, April 28, 2013 from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Resolution 361. Approve request for city property. This is requested by the Hurrican Foundation for suicide prevention for Village Park and Pavilion for three-mile walk-a-thon on Sundays, September 29, 2013 from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Resolution 362. Approve request for city property requested by the United Methodist Church of New Brunswick for Monument Square for Easter sunrise service on Sunday, March 31, 2013 from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 a.m. Resolution 363. Approve request for city property and closure of streets by the Veterans Alliance of Barbiton Valley for Monument Square Park and Barby Street. This is for the memorial decorate and opening ceremony on Monday, May 27, 2013 from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 and this closure including Houston Avenue, Walton, George Street, Albany, Baritan Avenue, and Woodbridge Avenue. Resolution 364 held at the request of the city administrator. Resolution 365. Approve request for city property requested by New Life Water Club. Location Village Park and Pavilion for 3K run walk on Saturday, April 27, 2013 from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Resolution 366. Approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance by industrial contracting and living company. The reason is to place a crane in the doctor's parking lot as a Pierce University Hospital to hoist an air conditioning unit to the roof. This is for Saturday, January 19, 2013 with alternate dates of Saturday, January 26 and February 2, 2013 from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Resolution 367. Approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance is requested by Chandler Construction Group. The reason is to place a crane in the parking lot as a Pierce University Hospital to lift still to the roof. This is Saturday, January 5, 2013, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and this is done from talk. Resolution 368. Approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance remain closure by Quality Construction and the reason is to place a crane at 98 Albany Street to lift an H-bag unit to the roof. And this will be on January 19, 2013 with an alternate date of Saturday, January 26 from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Resolution 369. Reject all bids that mean excess of funds available or authorized rebid on the revised specification. And this is for the removal of fuel tanks, fuel storage tanks at various locations. Resolution 370. Approve order of contracts for 211 General Chemical Corporation, Newlibar USA, George Point Chemical Company, Raymont, Brent Techno East. This is to furnish and deliver of chemical for both these facilities. And the term will be in February 1, 2013 to January 31 of 2014 not to exceed $712,429. Resolution 379. Approve request for use of city property and relaxation of noise ordinance. And this is requested by Deliverance Prayer Revival Tavern, the location of the park is for New Gospel Concert and Crusade from Friday, June 14, 2013 to Sunday, June 23, 2013 from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. Resolution 372. Approve request for use of city property and relaxation of noise ordinance requested by Deliverance Prayer Revival Tavern. This is for Pister Park for the New Gospel Concert and Crusade Friday, August 16, 2013 to Sunday, August 23, 2013 from 5:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Resolutions 373. Approval to post signs in certain neighborhoods relative to the celebration of Martin Luther King's birthday. And this is on Barby Street including Ballwin, Arjois Kimber, Hale, Arjois Kimber, Comstock, Arjois Kimber Avenue, Delavan, Arjois Kimber, St. Andrew's Kimber Avenue. And this will be for Tuesday, January 15, 2013 to Tuesday, January 22, 2013, and this is done from talk. Resolution 374. Approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Matrix Development Group. And the reason is to complete construction of the fighting garage located at Block 117 of 1.3. And this will be for Saturday, actually Saturdays, from January 19, 2013 to July 20, 2013 excluding holidays from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Resolution 375. Approve request for road closure. And this was requested by Shabbat House, local Shabbat into Senior Street and Richardson Street for the religious wedding ceremony on Sunday, February 17, 2013 from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. and police extra duty is required. Resolution 376. Approve request for use of city property by God's Promise. The location is Village Park and Pavilion for Turkey Truck 3K Walk 5K Run on Sunday, November 3, 2013 with a rent date of Sunday, November 10, 2013 from 10:00 a.m. to 14:00 p.m. Resolution 377. Approve request for use of city property requested by General Childs in New Jersey. Village Park and Pavilion for 5K Run on Saturday, June 1, 2013 from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Resolution 378. Approve contract, order of contract and authorization to reject one proposal and rebid for the telephonic interpreting for interpreters for the municipal court with Jurys Grasberg, Luis Ugart, Gerard Fischner, Leonor Posseboi, ASO Interpreter Referral Service, Paraplas Translations. This is a term of 12 months starting in January 17, 2013 and ending on January 16, 2014 not to exceed $12,100. Resolution 379. Approve order of contract for Janitorial Supplies with Camden Bag and Paper Company, Scollies, Porsha Industries, and Central Harley Corporation. Camden Bag is $61,506.81, School's Porsha is $3,487.84, and Central Harley Corporation is $7,652.70. And this is a term of 12 months starting January 19, 2013 and ending on January 18, 2014. Resolution 380. Approve fiber optic cable agreement and four card list agreement. This is requested by Underground Utilities Corporation. And this is for the installation of a fiber optic cable across Liberty Street. Resolution 381. Approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2013. Resolution 382. Order reject bid for fire museum community center project. Resolution 383. Approve Open Miss Raffless and Mary St. Peters Catholic Academy for Sabbath school date February 9, 2013. Resolution 384. Approve Open Miss Raffless and Mary St. Peters Catholic Academy for Sabbath and the day will be February 9, 2013. Resolution 385. Approve Open Miss Raffless and Mary St. Peters Catholic Academy for HSA St. James School. And this will be for February 23, 2013. And resolution 386. Approve resolution to refund escrow to 1130 NB LLC for the amount of $6,310.84. And resolution 387 is a resolution recommended by Mr. Robert Bob Colonna to the city council.
When led astray on resolution 369, that as a rule is to reject all bids. You know, it did not have sufficient power.
So that's the end of the Agenda Review Session. Let's start everybody inside the meeting.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Present.
Council President Escobar.
Here. Please be advised that the notice of the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and certified in that the annual notice which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and content of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been found, the city clerk has been placed on an appropriate voting board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, and equal liberty and justice for all.
Please may I take a moment to one of those who are Americans and Iraqis who lost their lives in the Iraqi war. At this time, I would like to make a motion for open minutes of January 7 for some group.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. The public here, we're going to leave at the end of open, when we are finished with the resolutions. So at this time, we're going to ordinance a second reading. Ordinance 01121. Does anybody in the public would like to make a comment? Okay, an ordinance to authorize vacation of a portion of Liberty Street and a portion of Nielsen Street in the City of New Brunswick. Does anybody in the public have said they would like to make a comment about these specific ordinance?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Now ordinance of first reading. Ordinance 01102. An ordinance to approve the financial agreement with 135 Somerset News Urban Innoal LLC. You'd be ordered setting down Wednesday, February 6 for public hearing the same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, resolutions 335 to resolution 387 accept. Resolution 382, which we're going to hold until after the public hearing. Does anybody on the public would like to make a comment of any of these resolutions? Mr. Crandall?
Charles Crandall, Patterson Street in Brunswick. I noticed a lot of these resolutions call for us to be hiring lawyers for the next calendar year to do a variety of different things. Do we have to have so many lawyers? Is it typical to hire a whole bunch of different lawyers to do things instead of the capable ones that we're used to dealing with at these meetings?
Well, I think so there's lawyers for different departments and different jobs at different companies. So I'm assuming that is the reason why.
There are specialties there for taxes, specialties here for laborations.
Yeah, there's 20 million reasons.
And so forth.
Fair enough. I just wanted to see if, you know, if those things could be covered by existing folks. 35 deals with storage tanks, that's the being rebid.
No, no, that, this will be rebid at a later time. Just be, if you look at the language of the resolution, just all of the, at this time, being assessed on the points of it, so it'll be rebid at a later time with regard to specs.
Right, so in language terms, what does that mean? It means that there weren't enough funds for the...
The Zeds came in much higher than we would, and the assess of the funds that were available was as good as at this time.
Okay, is there any time estimate of when it could be rebid, if it's scheduled?
Sure, and two of them will probably be removed further than that as an emergency because they have to be removed in connection with the fire museum that we're going to have a public hearing on later this meeting.
Understood. 46 is underground, underground cables, underground something. Can you just tell me where that is, that block number?
That's down, I think it's the foot of Ruby Street in connection with the...
The new project, yeah. I guess the fire museum we'll be hearing about in a bit. And my last question is with the escrow for 1120 NB LLC. What does that represent? The very last one, I think is one that added for Bob Colonna afterwards, but...
Now, those, you know, escrows requiring in connection with development projects. And when the projects are over, any funds that weren't needed to be paid out of the escrow are returned to the developer. And while I don't know the details of this, that's what this is all about.
Yeah, the reason I ask is I believe that address, that's, is that on Somerset Street? I believe that's 1130 Somerset Street, and I don't think anything's happened with that property.
We did add something up, is that on there?
Yeah, there are two different escrows that are set up. One is for the review of the plans, which has happened. Then there is a separate escrow that goes to the engineering department, which is to, for the site inspector to go out and inspect that when he does the work, that he does it in accordance with what the plans are. That escrow would still be in place, and that's in the engineering department.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, one more question. Temporary appropriations, what were the emergent conditions that required this spending?
That's the way you do it for the state law until you got in budget for the year. That's the way that the statute calls it. Not truly described, but it's...
Yeah, in particular, the water utility needed some more money to award contracts. One of the, one of the large ones is on the agenda tonight for bulk chemicals or the treatment process.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
I just have to have a correction that I, we've not mentioned that 364 is being held at the request of the city administrator. So I just want to put that myself, because of the issues. Anybody else has any other comments regarding these resolutions that we discussed as said, 364 and 382?
Will the resolution, second?
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. At this time, we're going to, Ms. Anderson to the public hearing. Oh, you want to, I'm sorry. We're going to, one of the resolutions that we just approved is recognizing Mr. Robert Bob Colonna. So, Mr. Hamilton, will you read please the resolution?
Where is Robert Bob Colonna passed on this life on December 20, 2012, at the age of 54? And whereas Bob Colonna was a longtime resident of South River before moving to New Brunswick, during the 20 years that he lived in New Brunswick, he made major contributions to the civic life of the city. As member and chairman of the city's planning board, as a member of the city's acting service committee, as a member of the New Brunswick Environmental Commission, and as a Democratic committee man. Whereas Bob Colonna worked for 25 years with the Mississauga County Weights and Measures Department, serving as deputy superintendent at the time of his death. And whereas Bob was a friendly outgoing man who gave cheerfully to his friends and fellow men. And whereas Bob is survived by his devoted wife, Hecy Ellen Colonna, two sons Tyler and Nicholas, his parents John and Goldie Colonna, his sisters and other relatives in New Jersey and Pennsylvania area. And whereas Bob Colonna will be remembered with worth, affection, and respect by his many friends and colleagues. Now therefore, favor resolved by the members of city council that they express their command, condolences, and sympathy to Bob's wife, Hecy Ellen Colonna, and to the other family members of his special New Brunswick gentleman. And further resolved, a certified copy of this resolution is provided by the city clerk to Mrs. Colonna and to Mr. M.C. Jean-Cour.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. The portion of the public hearing, I just wanted to remind everybody that those who are going to be addressing the council, that you're going to have five minutes to address the council, please. Hopefully, we will have to use the clock, but if we have one available. At this time, I would like to ask, Mr. Hamilton, if you could give us an introduction, and then we're going to have Mr. Robert in doing.
Excuse me, Rebecca, I'm here to recuse myself because Garladi Construction Company was one of the leaders.
Are you going to do the public comment first, the main public hearing?
You want to do that first? For the public hearing.
For the public comment, not public hearing.
Okay, for the public comment, you want in my five minutes? I was going to do it differently, but it's okay.
You're the boss.
You're the boss. Again, let's, let's start then with the public comment portion of the meeting. Five minutes, please. Yes, Mr. Crandall, I'll be right with you.
Good evening, council. I was sort of hoping to come here and see the table turned, or at least get an update on what's going to happen with the table. But first, I would like to mention, you just said you'd like to remind us that there are only five minutes to speak. I believe that represents a departure from what's been done under your predecessor and the standard rules. I have been this in meeting, have I? Is this, is this a new rule that's going to be enforced?
It's just that since today is one of those meetings that we have a public hearing that we have a lot of people that are going to be participating in. So that's why today I said let's do five minutes in order to make it as expeditions and orderly as possible.
I'll try my best to keep it short. The table, can we turn the table? Is there support to turn the table and have all members face the public?
We are working on it, and I know Mr. Hamilton, if you want to give a brief update of the...
My understanding, Mr. Crandall is trying to finish the problems that we have with respect to the leak in roof. And until that's done, it really doesn't make any sense to do the rest of this in here. That's, he's, I know from talking to him, it's something that gnaws at him all the time, he wants to do it, but I also think he's very smart in, in wanting to give him care of before he moves to that next step.
But let me add to that, that we, we are having conversations to see if it's something that we're going to just, you know, we are open to see if we could try it and see how it goes. So we haven't finalized that, it's still open, you know, we're still having conversations on that.
Okay, well, forgive me, I don't quite understand how the work being done on the roof prevents the table from being turned to a different angle.
I don't think it's only that, it's just that since the, all the renovations that are going to be done, you know, sometimes, you know, if you look at it at the whole picture, it might be better just to wait. But again, I tell you that there's still conversation of the possibility of trying it prior to that, if this council, if this case.
Thank you, I hope those conversations go speedily. I need to ask about the shooting that happened last night. I understand someone was seriously injured in a shooting on Somerset Street. I understand someone was, uh, seriously injured in a shooting on Somerset Street.
There was a shooting on Somerset Street last night, an individual was shot. It's actively being investigated right now, and I'm not going to talk anymore on that until the investigation is completed.
Is, is the victim okay? Is he alive?
I'm not going to join anything else on it.
Um, also wanted to ask about two exciting projects I learned about at the Citizens Recreation Commission. Um, one would be a, a potential for a dog park, the first dog park in New Brunswick. The other would be for the first skate park in New Brunswick. I might support both of those things. I'd like to find out more about where those things will be and sort of what the timeframe is for, for those moving forward.
Uh, the skate park is going to be a component of a, uh, improved recreation park. Uh, the design for that park has been, uh, I think just completed, and we're looking for funding to, um, cause the construction of that improvement this summer. Um, the dog park is something that's been, uh, kicked around, but I don't have any, uh, direction on that yet. Don't know where that will be and if it will be.
Is there some idea of the timeframe on the skate park? I'm sorry.
Um, like I said, I think we're hoping to get construction going this summer, but, uh, we have not put together the entire funding formula for the project yet.
Understood.
We will be looking to Green Acres for some funding if possible. We'll be looking to the open space, uh, program at the county if possible, and we'll be looking for our own capital dollars from that.
Uh, that's all the questions I have. I just want to use the remainder of my time to tell everybody, please, please go vote on Tuesday and, uh, do your research and, and, you know, exercise your franchise, participate in the school board election on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Cradell.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Moore, I live at two eleven Joyce Comer Avenue. Uh, I didn't think that I would have to come down here today, uh, go against the police department and the city, to where what I asked for, I believe was taken care of. But thi- this day is very important to me. I'm here even after getting surgery, just to prove that, to, to speak to the city and New Brunswick Police Department. Would you please give me information on how a raid is done? When, when a, when a house is raided?
Depends on circumstance, okay? Police matter, you put together.
Need more information then, how we, if they never raise a budget.
Well, it, it, I, I know for sure it had to be set up, uh, that was Monday, ten thirty, two, two oh seven Joyce Comer Avenue. Did, uh, do you have any information on, on?
I don't have any detail on what you're talking about.
Well, well, maybe I set myself clear, due to where that house was raided. The boys, it was, it's a three-level apartment building. That's where the boys climbed out the window, ju- where, where, where the officers, about fifteen officers were going in chasing after the boys, where they jumped out onto the window, jumped on our house, jumping from roof to roof, having guns pointed up to our house for the lights, with, with flashlight. I mean, do, do you know how scary that is, for somebody to jump on your roof and then someone, someone holding guns? Or what, the next day you can't even go to sleep with almost getting me and my girl in a heart attack? Is there any better way that you could have told me that something like that would, would happen? I may not be, I, I could, I can't talk too good right now, if you're understanding me clearly, but for a raid to be over to this house, and then all of a sudden my house is lit up with lights and guns pointing just because the gentlemen were jumping from roof to roof? Do, do you feel what I'm saying?
I, I hear what you're saying. Um, I am not familiar with the situation.
So you're telling me that New Brunswick Police Department didn't know anything about that lo- that house being raided at ten thirty?
No, I'm saying, I don't know, I wasn't there, I don't know about it.
But as captain, you, you, you should.
If it's possible, um.
I can look into it.
Yes, I can look into it, and I know that raids, there's a policy at the city that needs to be followed.
We don't kill people.
And one of them, and I assure you as well, I think I will tell somebody here, so that you're going to have a break, because then the investigation is jeopardy. Don't withstand me, if you could find out, Mr. Captain Miller, and see what happens, yes?
All right, I will report back what I can at the next meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm serious, like I said, do, do you know how scary that was to have gentlemen jumping on your roof? And like I said, what, how scary it is still to go to sleep, because you never know what is go- is it going to happen again, was the drug bust? Because you know raids happen more than one time, and believe me, this is the third incident with this house, so please, I, I expect no more trouble leading to my house of what's going on over there.
We will try to find out the information for you, thank you for your concern, thank you.
So please, please, do, do, like that you're saying, you cannot tell anyone about a raid. Honestly, we're the only one on that block that's really been there time-wise, so I, I, honestly, I don't see why you, you can't really advise someone like that about a situation for, for their sake. Say the guns would have went off, what? Who would have been in the situation, me and my family?
I understand, but like I said, there should, you know, there's a policy of procedure, and Captain Miller.
Well, I think a raid should be handled much safer than that. Not, like I said, not looking where, look, you would think that someone thought that my house was being raided. And I surely wanted to get that out clear, like I said, even though I, I, I went for surgery and all, but believe me, I made sure that I came to this meeting, hurting it all. Please do not let it happen again.
Thank you. Anybody else want to phone me, who would like to address the council?
Hi, Eugene Stone, one seventy-three Rockford Street, five thirty. Now, I'm concerned about, uh, scoop a dude for law, whatever you call it, in New Brunswick. What can you do about that? Because everybody with their dog.
I'm sorry?
Scoop a dude for law for the dog.
All the, this people?
Yeah, they, they bring, people bring their dog from their house to go use the bathroom to your house. That's happened too much. Y'all forgive me, if I would have had something one day, I would have probably been in jail right now, because I asked the gentleman to get it up, because he, uh, two nights before that I had bought a brand new rug, put it out in my, in my apartment, and I happened to step in the grass, and I ain't think about it, I took it all the way upstairs, you should have known it. I'm saying, I, I would have been out there right now, I'm, I'm not playing with, I'll tell you the truth. Can y'all, can y'all please try to do something? Because that's what all people do, they take it from their house, bring it to your house. And you can't tell them to pick it up, because they don't want to hear that. You call the police, they ain't coming, they might go, but it, it, two hours later, but they're, you know, can you please try to do some kind of, put something in it? Hey, folks, something's going to be done.
Is there any way we could, we could sign, say, or we could, uh, maybe, I just want to, I just want to tell you this, uh, experience.
I don't want to go in one of your, come out of others, I ain't standing up for that. I'm just wondering, can y'all do something about it? Y'all in charge.
But that's what I'm saying, that if there's a way, if there's a possibility of getting a sign, putting.
Well, give me one good reason, what, what you thinking about doing? Just off the record, somebody up there got something.
Uh, when, I guess when that happens to me, I talk to the person, I say, excuse me, you know, this is.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm.
So I'm saying that we might be able to, see, if there's a possibility of putting a sign in one of your neighborhood, or the neighbors telling people to curb their dogs.
Or, or the sign might not work, but let me say this, if he saw it, he can file a citizens complaint, those require the police department, then, uh, citizens complaint, they generally handle it normally as a neighborhood complaint, so the judge tries to get people to talk to one another rather than just impose, uh, penalties.
Try to talk to them, if you think that you can talk to your neighbor or the person.
Well, I don't speak English, most of them here, I mean, Spanish, most of them speak Spanish, I don't speak Spanish.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else want to phone me, who would like to address the council?
I just have a quick question, I'm not sure if this.
Sharon Lane, two 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 Fulton Street.
I'm not certain if this is the right venue, but I do have an issue with a neighbor, and I've never, ever had this problem before. My family has lived on Fulton Street over forty years, I've never had to make a complaint about anybody's behavior on the block. But there is someone who's moved into the neighborhood in June, and since June, they have, um, uh, not contributed to the well-being of the neighborhood. This person has an extended, uh, truck and an extended van. Apparently, they pick up junk and stuff, so that's parked on the street, and it has been parked on the street basically every single week since June. And then there's a lot of trash, like, our trash pickup is Tuesday and Friday, and, you know, normally they put a couple of bags out, but there's a lot of trash that's left over in the driveway. I have talked to the inspector, he went by and looked at it, and he thought that the dr- that the garbage was where it was supposed to be, but he looked at it on Monday, and on Tuesday, the stuff that could have been picked up and the stuff that could have been recycled is still there. And I find that, um, a lot of their stuff constantly blows down the street, it blows onto my property, it's an eyesore, and I'm just outraged. So I just need to understand what the process is and what's allowed, because when I asked him, for instance, in, over the summer, you know, when they moved in, he did a lot of construction, so I didn't complain. But he still has that thing there, that big truck, which I have pictures of. Then he didn't do any, like, of stuff like everybody else in the neighborhood during the fall, s- do your leaves, put them out to be put out. He puts his leaves out October twenty-ninth, the day Sandy came. So where do you think all the leaves went? Around my house, I had sixteen bags of garbage later that week. And while some people, you know, went through a lot of trouble during Sandy, and I understand that, I'm just saying as an example, this is the kind of person he is. And when I asked him over the summer to please not park his truck in front of my house, he told me he could park anywhere he wanted and would continue to do so. I don't find that to be neighborly. And I just need to understand, what am I, what are, what are my rights as a taxpayer? Because I understand he doesn't park that truck on Livingston because Livingston's a county road. So I don't know what Fulton Street is, uh-uh, I don't know you, please don't. I don't, you know, I don't know what Fulton Street is. I need to understand, because I really feel put upon, and it is not fair. I take good care of my property, and every time I look outside, I feel my blood print, I feel myself, like this, because it really makes me crazy, and I'm not going over to his house to clean up his crap. He needs to put it up himself in the right place. He has a fence, that he could put all that junk behind the fence, since it's just sitting there. But he doesn't do anything. So what am I to do?
So how can you, you want to say something?
Well, I wanted to say that there are at least two weaknesses that restrict overnight storage of trucks and length of trucks, and if you would talk to Ms. Gayden, who's sitting to my right, she's also the housing prosecutor, if you'll talk to her, she'll be able to give you some direction. Can't say for sure it's going to solve the problem, but I think it'll start that way. Okay?
Thanks, I can just make sure that, that you can talk to, you say. Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public who would like to address the council, yes?
Yeah, hi, William Barkley, uh, one fifty-four Commercial Avenue. Um, myself and my neighbors continue to have quality of life issues relating to, uh, a club in our neighborhood called Degala Cafe at one fifty-six Commercial Avenue. And, um, uh, on June fourth, a city council meeting, uh, was when the tariff report was presented, and it was, I believe it was agreed that the restrictions that are on your license would continue to be suspended, you know, held not restricted, but suspended. Um, and that we would come back and review this in ninety days. And I've looked back through the record, and there's never been a review of it ninety days on, and I don't have enough fingers to count the number of times the city council has said, "We will review this in ninety days." And so I would like to call upon the city council to please, um, we are having major quality of life, uh, we and our neighbors are having major quality of life problems due to the existence of a dance club in our neighborhood, and we would like to have their restrictions on our license reviewed shortly.
And council president, prosecutors of, uh, office operates, I would be interested to see if we missed scheduling that, if we did, we'll get it scheduled promptly, but I, I don't know the facts, I'm sending you right now.
So, so we're going to find out what happened, if, we're going to try to see how we can reschedule and get you the information, maybe from Captain Miller, Betty, or their issues have, have happened, and after that, hey, and we'll try to put it as soon as possible.
Okay, I've reviewed all the minutes of the city council for the last two years, and there's been no review of the restrictions, so we would like to call upon the next city council meeting, or the one following, to have the city council review the restriction. We can present our case.
Do we know it? Do we know it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Change, yeah, one thirty, just come around there. I'd just like to thank the city council, uh, for your effort in allowing me to post, uh, posters for Dr. King. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, so you know, it's time, we were wondering, so far, and as you told you.
Well, the problem we have is the weather now, you know, and, and the flu, and we did want to do something on Monday, but I'm looking at the weather, and I don't want people to get sick, uh, on Monday, the weather is supposed to be like thirty-two degrees, you know, so, so by Friday, I'm letting people know, you know, don't, or, you know, because I don't want them to get sick.
Okay, so if you can, if you could notify the city clerk office, so that we can, also we could go out and participate with you on Monday.
If, if, that'd be a good thing, thank you.
Were you going to, I'm sorry, were you going to do that earlier? Because like, this is an operation day.
Well, yeah.
It's an operation day also.
No, Monday?
Yeah.
Monday is, I couldn't, Sunday.
No, it's been, well, the, the public one is on Monday at twelve o'clock. It's on Monday, he's swearing, the private swearing is on Sunday, on twenty.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, twenty, yeah, Sunday, and then Monday's the official one, when everybody's in the city, it's at twelve o'clock.
Oh, man, it's about the time, I wanted to do it on Monday and two. So that means I have to move things around in about five, you know, let, uh, Russell and I would pretend, you know, because I might have to even just move it another day, since people want to get involved, and we'd like to see you speak, because it's, it's purely for Dr. King, and I, and I think that we, we all can, can, can stand the dose of, uh, of, of what Dr. King meant to all of us.
Okay, thank you, he was positive.
I'll work with you, thank you.
Anybody else with a, a security? Anyone else, please?
From Mel Pitten, nine one city street. Uh, first want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
The presidency. Uh, also, I wanted to, uh, ask you guys your opinion on the elected school board, I've been missing an action for a little bit, like what would you take on the elected school board, and what's your take on the special election that's coming up in a few days?
Well, that, it has already, so.
What would the special election pass?
No, no, the, the elections, the, you know, how do we feel about it? As you should be here when we talk about it. But I, I, you know, the public, you know, the residents spoke, and I hope that everybody goes on Tuesday, the twenty-second, and most, for whoever they feel that is the best person to feel the, the, you know, the, this is how we do it now, so. At least in my opinion, that's.
Also, I, um, question is also about, um, I've been noticing, even though I've been not here as much, but you know, I've still been working, and I've been noticing a mobile precinct, and I notice it's been Livingston Avenue, Livingston, and I think that's New Street, it's also been on Remsen and Seaman Street, and I've also noticed it on Troopin Delve. And I wanted to know, what was the problem with the mobile precinct being on Remsen Avenue and Hell Street after the murder, even after I requested that? It's been everywhere but there.
Captain Miller? Are you here?
I, I think I already said, I do want to know why it's not at Remsen and Hell.
It hasn't been.
Yeah, I, I don't know why it was not at Remsen and Hell. Uh, the commander of operation, the patrol division decides where he wants to put it, I can, um, address it with him, why it wasn't at Remsen and Hell, but they, they discuss it, you know, amongst the patrolmen, where they want to put it in neighborhoods, you know, and how it affects that mission for today.
So we'll find out, yes, on that, I know it's fresh, because I say it freshly all the time, so.
Huh?
It's fresh, that is all that's mentioned, so.
What, what constitutes the whereabouts, like what constitutes the mobile precinct having to be at any place, like French Street?
When we get to that information from Captain Miller, she just said that he's going to talk to the commander and see how we see that may turn in the years.
Okay, also, um, also wanted to, uh, raise the issue, I've been getting phone calls, uh, you know, people have been contacting me about police issues, and I've been referring to Ms. Gayden.
I'm sure.
No, I've, I've been referring people to you as far as police, uh, issues, well, you know, community members have a concern, and they're saying it's taking you to schedule appointments like weeks away.
That's not true, I have two appointments tomorrow and one next week.
You have one tomorrow?
Two tomorrow.
When did the person call you?
Last week, and I got an email.
That's what I'm saying, because a lot of people, their issue was, you know, it, like something fresh happened, and you tell them you set an appointment up a week away, now Now that may be an issue because say for instance, they're not available for that appointment and, uh, or they get discovered within that time. So you never know what, you know, uh, took place as far as them being violated, quote unquote, violated by police, uh, police officers. So I'm saying is maybe there's a way that if you could set something up where people could actually walk in maybe, or you could schedule something right away when it, you know, just happens. If that's unheard of, then maybe you should get somebody else.
It's not unheard of, it's just if you were called from now, when we announced the position, I set my office hours would be on Thursdays, Thursday afternoon. And I've set up appointments on Thursday afternoon whenever anyone is called. If they called on Friday, it's the next Thursday. The young lady who called last week, her appointment is tomorrow.
No, but I'm.
But, you know, I have a busy practice and I have other things that I have to attend to, even city business. I can't just, uh, schedule someone to just walk in.
I understand, so maybe someone else should take the position.
Well, that's your opinion, my dear.
If I may ask you directly, I, I just wanna say that, eh, eh, I understand what you're trying, you know, the point that you're trying to make, but you also have to understand that, like Ms. Gayden said, she's busy and anywhere you go, regardless of, of what the situation that you need to deal with, we have to, sometimes I don't like it either, we have to wait and we have to do an appointment because we gotta walk in. Even in my place of business, as much as people like to say, "We'll be here right away", there is some appointments that we have to take because if not, it's, it's difficult to handle.
So somebody slap me in the face, so somebody slap me in the face, I gotta make an appointment to get justice?
No, no, because if you wanna talk to Mrs. Gayden yet, it doesn't have anything to do because you still have to have justice and make a report with the police department. If the person feels uncomfortable doing that, that's why you have to recall her. She just goes, "If you want, she gives you an appointment, it has nothing to do with the investigation of whatever the complaint is."
Hold on, Mrs. Chabot, Mrs. Chabot. First off, don't defend her and second of all, don't kill me, I'm the messenger. People, people, wait, 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 wait. I have no official position. People contact me.
I understand.
And, and me doing what's right, not saying the cop, I wasn't there, I gave them Ms. Gayden's number. And they, they contacted, they, they called me again and they say they have some concerns. Last, the, the last lady that spoke to me, her daughter's in the background crying. Her dau, her daughter's actually crying in the background and she's like, I said, well, listen, give, you know, Ms. Gayden, this is her position. And she called back and said, "We gotta wait, you know, it's a week away." And, you know, feelings may be, may change then. Maybe she said, "You know what, I don't wanna pursue it." I say for instance, within that week, they see that officer again and get further intimidated and then they don't even show up to that appoint, appointment. So what I'm saying is maybe there's something in place to where we can get some immediate reaction to the situation. That's all my advice.
Yeah, no, I think I, I understand what you're trying to say, but I just wanna make sure I'm not defending this day, I'm just telling you, just taking the facts of life, you know, when you do business and the other thing.
This is not, this is not business. I'm talking about issues dealing with police officers and people's rights that they figure out.
Excuse me, can I finish?
Can I finish my, my statement and then can we have a conversation here? Can I finish my statement?
What?
That's all I'm asking, I heard you, so let me finish mine. So maybe what you could do is as an activist, as somebody who cares for the community and cares about all these people, the, the, the challenges that they have, maybe you should educate and tell them, "Look, I understand that this is, you know, it's a, it's a situation that you feel like you need to have an answer right away, but this is the process." They encourage them to continue even if you feel that they feel discouraged because you could be that person that, that, that make that change in that, in that resident, whoever it is. Because there is a process, Mr. Kimbrough, whether we flag it or not, there is a process and we need to educate and teach our people that this is the process. I encourage them through it, hold their hands. You know, all those four, four days or five days that they have to wait, hold their hands and say, "Don't worry, we're gonna make it happen, I'm gonna be with you." And I encourage them to continue pursuing what they feel that they, if they have a complaint. I don't want them to get discouraged if they feel that they have one, but they do need to understand that there is a process. And Ms. Gayden's office hours are on Thursdays, right? So we have to just follow that for now. That's what I'm saying.
Can I talk to him?
I'm the one who tells you that, you question to me.
Well, he, he, no, he addressed, he addressed me personally, so I'm just, I'm, I was talking, told you you're out of order, that's all I said. You were interrupting the council president. This is, this is all that I'm saying. You guys are taking, making this more with this. I'm saying you're not even gonna try to even attempt to make an adjustment. To me, that's the level of arrogance. You know, you're not even gonna attempt to at least, you know, consider, you know what, these are the community's concerns, let me look into it and let's see what we can do. That didn't even come out, you saying, you know what, grab them by the hand and tell them to wait till Thursday?
Encourage them.
Encourage them, I can't, this is the, I'm, listen, I'm not here to change their opinion. Yeah, distraught because of the system that's put in place by you guys. You work for them.
Well, you are community activists, that's your job, you know, like.
You are too.
But they haven't called me, so I'm telling you this, cause they've called you. Five minutes, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough, for that, we hear you, please.
I'll meet you next time.
Anybody else who'd like to address the council before the vote? I have somebody else.
Number three one, Kimberly Brennan, represent Team Savage and Life Running Club. I just wanted to introduce myself, this is gonna be our first five K that we'd like to have, and you can help.
This is a resolution, which one?
Yeah, number thirty-one.
What are your recommendations?
My name is Kimberly Brennan.
Kimberly?
Yes, with the Team Savage and Life Running Club. This is our first time requesting to have a five K there. So I wanted to make sure that you know who I am, who we're representing, we're just, um, people trying to get healthy and it's more of like a fun run, we won't be trampling anything, we'll be respectful and everything.
Well, no, no, okay, so, you know, they're passed, and, and. Is that mean all passed or did I just, it's, 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 thank you.
They wanted me to come so you would know who we are.
Thank you, thank you, I saw, it doesn't have very hard, you gotta hear you, thank you. Second, before we go into the public hearing, yes?
Yes, just very briefly, um, first of all, acknowledgement there that it's difficult to hear people in the back, so we can do more to amplify. But also, um, Councilwoman Garlotti should have been here for, for the public comment and nobody's fault, there's a confusion, but in the future, um, perhaps we should make the agenda in the order that we, that, that is decided to be best in advance rather than, than change it at the last minute so that that doesn't happen.
Council president always runs the agenda.
Yeah, the only thing that, that, um, eh, if I know it's there, you know, we have, eh, we have, eh, eh, yeah, things to change, especially with the amount of people that are here, was thank you, you pointed this thing.
Just to clarify, no disrespect, ma'am.
And it was my fault because I said, "Boy, um, here he set up a comment first", so I apologize for that, thank you.
Apologies.
Anybody else? Yes?
Yes.
Name and address, please?
Name and add, uh, Timothy McDougal, four fifty-nine Franklin Boulevard, Somerset, New Jersey. Um, I had a situation that happened a few years back with a few, uh, New Brunswick Police, uh, officers. Um, I was assaulted, um, arrested, and, um, I had marijuana planted on me, um, and money seized. Um, a little while later, um, I was able to, uh, get those money, that, that money back and those charges were, uh, dismissed. Um, but my question is basically, um, how are these officers still working for a New Brunswick Police Department if they're running around doing illegal activity? And, uh, I'm kinda scared to put it in this lady's hands right here because it sounds like she's too busy to handle, you know, real concerns, so, I mean.
Well, this is, um, I'm not covering this situation because I have no detailed knowledge or the officers know that she would be the person that the city has to hear any citizens or residents complain in reference to the police department. So that's the process, maybe I would suggest that tonight, after, you know, after the meeting, introduce yourself to her and talk to her to see when you could talk to her. You said this happened a while ago?
Yes.
Um, so I, I would suggest that you do that, recommend that you do that first.
Why is it working?
And if there's anything else that, that needs to be addressed, she would be the one to tell you in terms of the police department.
Question, why is it working?
Mr. Kimbrough?
I, I understand where you're coming from, you know, um, I had read something in the paper about, um, a New Brunswick officer, um, getting fired or something, some type of investigation that happened with the Internal Affairs Unit, you know, and, um, you know, it's like this, this system, I guess, that you got in New Brunswick is kinda iffy. So it's like, you know, I, I'm kinda afraid a little bit, you know, but I want, you know, some type of action to happen because these officers still work. I, I believe of, of these officers might have moved up in position. So my thing is how can these officers move up in position if they hired to protect and serve our community if they're running around doing illegal activity? Assaulting, uh, assaulting people and, uh, planting marijuana. I never heard of a cop planting marijuana on me. And, uh, that happened to me and I had the records to prove it. You know, I, I had money seized, I believe it was a couple thousand dollars. I got that money back too, you know, and, um, I just want some type of action. I, I don't want it to just, just file a report and then get swept under the rug. I want some type of action to happen for basically these officers. I want some type of investigation to go on for these officers because the officers that run around in New Brunswick right now are doing a lot of things that they're not supposed to be doing. And nobody's making an issue out of it, but I will stand and try to make an issue out of it and hopefully you can respect my wishes.
I am not in your, your situation, I think that we need to be careful. We generalize all officers, we've talked to, um, Attorney Gayden. After the meeting, I would suggest that she would tell you why is the process and she might, she, she's gonna be able to help you.
I mean, I'm kinda reluctant on speaking with her because it sounds like she, she, she got better things to do than sit there and handle, you know, things that's going on within the community.
And she, she's, you know, talk to her and see, tomorrow is Thursday, she might be able to help you out tomorrow. Which is, those are her hours.
I run my own businesses, so I can definitely come down and see you early in the morning, it don't matter in the afternoon, because I mean, this, 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 this needs to get handled.
Thank you.
This is our own going process.
Yes, it is. I didn't get your name.
Timothy McDougal.
Mr. Mc, McDougal. I have office hours Thursday afternoon. I have one appointment tomorrow afternoon, I have two appointments tomorrow afternoon. But if you'd like to see me, I can give you a card tonight, you can call me tomorrow, or we can make an appointment after the meeting tonight. It's not that.
So you're just gonna give me your, give me your card and kinda just brush me off?
That's not what I said, that's what I said.
I don't know how this works, I'm just trying to, okay.
If you'd like to talk to me after the meeting tonight, we can make an appointment so I can see you tomorrow. I have appointments on Thursday afternoon. If you can't make it tomorrow, then we can do it next week.
Okay, one more question. I mean, if the allegations that I'm putting forth are true, I mean, what usually happens to these type of officers?
Process to you tomorrow, Mr. McDougal.
Mr. McDougal, you will get your answers to those questions with hurry. That doesn't help you when you come back, so choose the one who can help you with all those questions, okay?
I, I, I hope so. Nice meeting, never mind.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public before we go into the public hearing portion of the, okay? Mr. Anderson?
The, we scheduled tonight a hearing in connection with the award of contract for the fire museum and community center at eighty-one Remsen Avenue. There were thirteen bidders and there were some irregularities in the bids submitted. And what we're gonna do now, the city engineer, Tom Golden, is gonna outline what we have ascertained the way we see it. Anybody who was a bidder and is interested will have an opportunity to ask Mr. Golden questions or to respond to what he said. Uh, I, I think we probably ought to identify who's here and who they represent and then Mr. Golden will get started. See a couple people.
How somebody, I know that before somebody raised their hands that they see, so, you want, who else you see right for the, okay? NTMP Construction.
Who?
Amy.
NTMP.
NT. Andrew?
My friend Mario from, uh, Techton Development.
And you, sir?
Hussein Bradwall from Sid and Associates.
Andrew.
So there's three different companies here.
Mr. Golden?
Mr. Golden? Come on up, up here, so.
Who you?
Make yourself a good target.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Council Chairman. As Bill mentioned, we received bids on December twenty-seventh for the renovations at the Remsen Avenue Firehouse for a community center and a fire museum. Thirteen bids were received, they ranged from a price of a million ninety-five thousand roughly up to two million five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, we did receive two protests, formal protests in writing from the second bidder and another protest from the sixth bidder. Uh, second bidder, uh, I do have a list here that might make it easier for everybody. It's just a list of the bids and the prices. I think that's helpful.
Pretty helpful, but it may be a bit more embarrassing. Some of them may know it already. It might help the council members keeping track of who's first, who's sixth. Tom?
NTMP, uh, Sid and, and, how do you, that's all. Mr. Murray, you said you're a tech guy, do you move up if you want?
All right, the bid specifications for this project, you know, do require a lot of requirements that are mandated by the state public bidding laws, but they also contain other requirements that are specific to the project. We looked at a number of the, these requirements and, uh, you know, summarized what the deficiencies are with each of the bids and what we found for the low bidder, which is NTMP Construction. Number one, they, we require, and I believe it's a state contract law requirement that they acknowledge the receipt of addendums. There were ten addendums issued on this project, they had only acknowledged the receipt of six of them. All the other twelve bidders did acknowledge all ten addendums. Uh, number two, we had a page in the specifications that require, and which is also a state mandated requirement, that they list their subcontractors, uh, for four specific fields and others if they like. Uh, when we, as part of that list, they have to identify what the contract cost value is for that particular, uh, subcontractor. And when we add up those subcontractors' quantities, it does add up to more than what the, the bid amount that they bid. Uh, the subcontractors add up to one point two four million and change, whereas their bid was the million ninety-five thousand. There are other mandatory, uh, requirements, uh, that they submit, uh, their public works contractor registration certificate for themselves and their subcontractors. Uh, that was not done. Uh, they are required to list previous work performed of a similar nature performed by this corporation. In this particular case, uh, they've only been in business, um, I believe, six months. So the ref, uh, the completed work goes the, uh, prior past, uh, when they were incorporated. So it could have been the individuals in the new corporation or not, we're not sure. Uh, they were asked to list the equipment available to do the work, they did not provide that list. And then we also asked for bank references and company references, uh, again, none of which were listed. And then also, um, there was a specific requirement which does apply to most of the bids here related to the aluminum windows on the project. There was a specific requirement in the specs that they identify who their major equipment and/or materials will be on the project. Uh, this particular contractor did not list that, uh, information. So we do not know what products they intend to furnish on the project. All right, for the second bid, Sid and Associates, again, that page that lists, that where they have to list their subcontractors, they did list their subcontractors and they listed their costs too for their portion, general construction. When you do the arithmetic on the numbers that they provided, it does add up to a million eight, one million eight hundred fifty thousand, which I believe that would be their corrected bid, but I'm not really certain on this job because the job was bid as a lump sum.
What bid price did they submit?
Their bid price as submitted was one million five hundred fifty thousand.
So those two did swear.
All right, as far as similar work performed, they listed work, but it was for a subcontractor that they were proposing, uh, namely their electrical sub. And they listed their electrical sub's experience as opposed to their own. Uh, they listed some equipment, but it was very limited that they had available to do the work. And they did not list bank references or company references as well. And again, they did not furnish the identification of materials and/or equipment they proposed to use on the project. Another requirement of that, which I failed to mention for, with the first bidder is for these aluminum windows that they were to list the specified manufacturer, uh, there was a requirement in there that they had to also furnish a letter stating that, that in fact, they would be furnishing and installing the specified windows. Uh, again, that letter was not furnished as well. For the third bid, which is Ciproco, uh, the one deficiency that we, we noted was they listed manufacturers for major equipment and materials, but for this specific item, for the aluminum windows, they did not provide that letter which I just mentioned they were supposed to also furnish. But they did list a alternate manufacturer, but the specifications went even, went even further to say that if they were proposing an alternate to the specified windows, they had to submit that in advance of the date of opening of the bids so that it could be evaluated by our architect and a decision made as to whether or not those, that specific equipment would be acceptable.
So they could use an alternate as long as they just provide anything?
In advance of the bid. In advance of the bid, yes. The fourth bid was Tekton. Their deficiency actually ends up in the section where they were to list the major equipment and materials for the project. They provided a statement saying using specified equipment. So again, we're interpreting that as saying they will furnish and install any and all specified equipment that was required by the specifications. They did not provide that letter, though, that the contract specifications did require. That would have reiterated that they would be using the specific aluminum windows proposed by the architect. The fifth bid was by GPC. Again, too, they did not, they did not list any of the major equipment or materials to be furnished, nor did they provide a letter identifying the aluminum windows specifically. And finally, the sixth bidder is Brockwell. They say in that section where they were to list their major equipment and materials that, and to quote, they say, "as per plans and specs." So again, they intend to furnish all the equipment and materials that are specified. And they did provide a letter supplementing that, filling out of that particular form in the document. All of the other requirements that I might have listed earlier as far as bank references, company references, previous similar work, bidders three through five did all of that. The one thing that Brockwell, the sixth bidder, did not submit is they did not submit their public works contractor registration certificates for their subcontractors. They did submit it for their own themselves, but not for their subs.
Tom, you want to, you want to admit something in respect to Brockwell when they did not submit subcontract paperwork?
That's what I just said.
Sorry.
Again, I don't think it necessary to go beyond that.
Unless Council President, unless Council insists on it, most of the rest were, were, would fail to list the major equipment list and things of that sort. But they are all higher than Tekton and Brockwell, which are the two that come closest to meeting the specs. He'll walk through those if you want.
No, no, that would be, you know, just me right here so that... Who wants to start addressing the council?
Well, why don't we start with NJ, NTMP?
NTMP.
Your name is, sir?
Nick Pangway. Apparently there's some things listed in here, but I mean, I feel that, you know, we could do the job for that. And the reason about the references, I've been in business for twenty years. It's a new company. That's, it started six months ago, but I mean, I've been in business for over twenty years.
Should have spelled that out for us, that would have been very helpful to us. Your addition, got it?
My addition, I did speak to Mr. Venesia about the state registration numbers for my subs. And I think my secretary had sent it to him. And we correct, I corrected also the numbers on the list for my addition. It was a, I mean, a mathematical error is what happened.
When did you do that? After the bid submission?
The next day or...
It's a time fix for this on the bids that other people have got to rely on. I understand. Thank you for your help.
Any questions from the council to NTMP?
How about Sid? And your name?
Hussein Berhadwala, for Sid and Associates, Pacton Engineer. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. First, what I like to do is adjust some of the issues that Mr. Golden had brought up. Miko Electric Company, which is a company that we include the project references and equipment listings of that sort, is actually, the owner is the same owner as Sid and Associates. And Miko Electric has a forty-plus million dollar bonding limit they've been established for over thirty years, working in New Jersey and New York, doing very complex effluorum or other type projects. Sid and Associates was established to do a little more general contracting, smaller general contracting work in New Jersey. So that is the main reason why that item was included. Miko Electric, the resources that it brings, the manpower, the equipment, the financial support is what's supporting Sid and Associates. So I just wanted to clarify that. Then the other item was...
They should have clarified on the main reason.
I think there was a letter included on Miko, a letter identifying that both the entities were associated.
Is there another one?
I don't recall that, but again, even the references that they provided were tunnel work, were large treatment plants of the sort. There was nothing very similar to...
It wasn't relevant to the top here.
Sure, but I think the experience is gained on those type of projects, very complex, different building systems applied and assist in the development of a project such as the community center, whereas general contracting and addition work.
Take that into consideration.
Absolutely. The other item was in reference to the numbers not matching, I think state law is for the number that's submitted in writing, which is the one point five million. And the numbers that were listed next to the subcontract numbers, the nature of the work, what it seems to be now with public bidding is that they just submitted and prepared pretty much last minute, you know, thirty seconds before they actually go in. So what we like to do is pre-fill as much as we can. We may have gotten a subcontractor number that was more competitive, put it in, sent it off. And, you know, that correction wasn't made on that. So that arithmetic doesn't, doesn't correspond. That's quite possible what had happened. But what the bid that was in writing is the bid that we're proposing, the one point five five million, which is the cost of the work to put a community center. Now I want to follow up with some of the protests against our organization in reference to the letter that was not included for section in Division Eight. Including that letter for the materials that are included with the project.
Don't spend too much time on that.
Pardon?
Don't spend too much time on that.
Okay. Like thirty seconds, if I may. I just want to bring the council aware of sheet PROP dash two, where it illustrates the bidder certifies to the validity of the bid prices and the contract items in definitions zero zero seven hundred dash five. Contract includes planned specifications to the items. When we submit our bid and we sign it off and we agree to perform the work for one point five five million, we're inherently agreeing to everything within the specifications. And given the fact that a number of the bidders had not included that letter, experienced contractors who performed this type of work, slithered bread and butter, month after month after month for decades, that they did not include that letter, nor did we, clearly shows that it's not, it's not a common requirement for the project.
I said, "Don't spend too much time on that."
All right. Thank you. Those are my, you know, primary items. The last item was in reference to NTMP. It was a fatal defect as per New Jersey local public contracts law not to acknowledge addendum one through, one through ten, or seven through ten inclusive. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Tekton?
My name is Brendan Murray, I'm the president of Tekton. I think the, in regards to the other bidders that have made statements, I think the errors associated with their bids are fatal enough because it doesn't give, it would give them an opportunity to pick and choose what would be their price depending on what, how the bids turned out. And I think those are fatal flaws that the council shouldn't consider their bids. In regards to the reported deficiency with Tekton's bid, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Golden regarding that I didn't address that one particular issue. There's a, there's a specific form within the bid documents that asks about the material and equipment, which I did indicate that I would be providing the specified material. I believe that that adequately answers the question in regards to the specific item in Division Eight. And I believe that I'm the lowest responsible as well as responsive bidder. And when I, when I talk about responsibility, Tekton's experience stands alone. I don't have the, I'm not using the experience of another company to stand here. And until the other companies have their own experience, they, it goes by the experience of the bidder, not the individuals that are members of the companies. That's all.
Any questions from the council?
Remember, the council want to talk about this in public. I think you go to a closed session.
You don't do a closed session now?
Yes.
Brockwell's not here, are they?
Anybody else is not here from any other company who was part of the bid process?
Any comments I have will lead to a closed session. We need a motion. I think a motion would go in a closed session.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Esqabon?
Yes.
Now we're going to entertain a motion and make an award.
Make a motion?
Motion to...
Read the resolution. Oh, it's a word. Okay.
Second.
Whereas on December twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, the City of New Brunswick received a total of thirteen bid connections to the fire museum and community center project, specification number eight eleven dash twelve. We shall now take step away. And thereafter, two protests were received, first by Brockwell and Carrington Contractors Inc., the sixth low bidder challenged all the lower bids. The second by Sid and Associates LLC challenged the low bid. Whereas in accordance with the local public contracts, the hearing was withheld on the bid protest and the award of contract. I would cheer in Thomas' vote to be the city engineer and the following other persons testified. Nick Pangway, Usan Boran, or something, I'm sorry.
Hussein Berhadwala. Berhad, Berhadwala.
Berhadwala. And Brendan Murray. And whereas as a result of the hearing, city council has determined to follow. NTMP Construction did not include the current public works contractor registrations. Bid total does not coincide with total bid items. Bid is not acknowledged, addendums seven through ten. Sid and Associates Inc., no experience shown for Sid, experience known for a subcontractor and for unremitted work. Bid total would not equal total of contractor and subcontractor prices. Ciproco East Street proposes other than specified windows storefront, but failed to provide product test reports and product details as required by one point six quality assurance, did not establish equal windows, section statute. GPC Inc., bid did not include the information required by section oh eight five one one three dash six, aluminum windows section one point six, high quality assurance, did not furnish major equipments. Brockwell and Carrington Contractors Inc. did not furnish subcontractor public works registration, registration. Rama Construction Corp. did not furnish major equipment. Albert Corlatti Construction Company did not furnish major equipment list. Salazar Associates Inc. did not furnish major equipment list. Eminem Construction Company Inc. major equipment list promptly in adwords. Apex Enterprises of Union Inc. did not furnish major equipment list. And Paul Auto Building Company did not furnish major equipment list. Ingrassia Construction Company Inc. did not furnish major equipment. No public works contractor registration forms, no company records. There were a couple, by the way, that didn't have the company records, so they didn't come all on here. The extent of objections made to the non-education of test reports or test details by Tekton Development Corp. or Brockwell and Carrington Contractors Inc., they responded, quote, "using specified equipment," close quote, and quote, "as per plan specifications," close quote, respectively. This demonstrated their intention to use specified windows, i.e. architectural window manufacturing company product, manufacturing corp product. Moreover, well, not applicable, owner may waive information as being per section three of information bids. Whereas a result of the, well, Tekton Development Corp. has determined to be the lowest responsible bid. Whereas funds are available in the amount of two million four one thousand accounts, three dash oh three one one oh three, three dash oh six one two oh three, A oh three, and three dash oh seven oh one oh one dash A dash oh five. The signature that was a PEXG financial assistance resolution certified and set funds are available in the above referenced accounts. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council in City of New Brunswick that the bid of Tekton Development Corporation is accepted. The mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute contract with Tekton Development Corporation in the event of two million four one thousand. The forward set contract will be approved by the city attorney. Be approved, resolved with the bids of unsuccessful bidders shall be determined. Further, we saw the certified copy of this resolution, which will actually be typed down until tomorrow. Be sent by the city clerk, city engineer, fire director, department of planning, community, nec, and other government. Chief Financial Officer, Design Idea Group, the Architect and Board Bidders.
This time?
We had a, we had a motion for the concept. You want to repeat your motion or adopt this amendment this week or this year?
Okay, make a motion to adopt the resolution. Award?
Second.
Any discussion from the public? Having known, I just want to say before we vote that I want to thank you for coming tonight and expressing, you know, being part of the process. Thank you for being short and simple and well, for being present. So behalf of the council, I want to thank you. Local?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Corlatti, Epstein, and Council President Esqabon?
Yes. Do you see, does any correspondence?
We do. Item number one is a public notification outreach and LSRP retention for one fifty-six French Street, also known as three fifty-five Demon Street, block one six five, lot nineteen, regarding an environmental investigation cleanup being performed at this property. Item number two is a letter from Dewberry regarding your final inspection slash release of performance security at two fifty-four Eastern Avenue. And item number three is a request for the final inspection of the site parking lot of Ajav Restaurant located at twenty-eight U.S. Food One. Each correspondent will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. Anywhere besides the city council, would you like to address the public? Have we done?
We'll adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan? Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Esqabon?
Yes.